The school board meeting for June the 30th, 2020 is now in session. Have a roll call, board members. Board member Grimes?
Yes.
Board member Hershey?
Here.
Board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Joyce?
Here.
Board member Willie?
Present.
Warren Jones present. We have six present. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convened in a special meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Duval County School Board is here to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that require vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operation of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational decisions. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the board meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accepted the public comment through email between eight o'clock AM through four thirty PM Monday, June the 29th, 2020 for the special board meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Public access. This meeting can be accessed by the public online at www.duvalschools.org/board. The meeting can be viewed viewed locally on Comcast channel two twelve, or it can also be viewed on WJCT channel seven point four, and a digital antenna would be required. It's important that the public use one of the above remote ways to access the meeting. If there are any problems or questions about gaining access to the meeting, the public can call nine oh four three nine zero two one two six and leave a name, number, and brief message. Do we have any public comment cards? We do. Okay. Uh, we are now in the public comment portion of our agenda. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond, but to use the input in our deliberations. Thank you for taking your time to address the board. Dr. Pierce?
Thank you, Chair Jones. The first public comment is from Marla Bryant. Ms. Bryant writes, "We, the members of the Duval Schools Pandemic Solutions Team of Education Stakeholders, are contacting you about the August tenth reopening of our public schools. As we represent many of your DCPS parents, we want to address some of our biggest concerns about your preliminary plan, so you will reconsider these items before they become finalized. In accordance with CDC guidelines, our group is passionate about requiring the use of mask in all indoor public spaces, six-foot spacing for social distancing, and increased hygiene and cleaning of areas that are contaminated. This applies to our schools as follows. Number one, our group emphatically urges you to require masks for students and faculty at all times and in all spaces on school grounds. Masks greatly reduce not only the chance of the wear getting the virus, but they also protect asymptomatic carriers from spreading the virus. This is the easiest item on our list to mandate since the district already purchased mask at the beginning of the pandemic. We assume the purchase wouldn't have been made had you not intended to have people wear the mask at school. Number two, while we appreciate the efforts to decrease the number of students on campus by going to a two-day school week, plexiglass in a crowded classroom will not contain the virus from spreading unless desks also are distanced six feet apart. COVID-19 is a potentially fatal airborne virus that easily moves around and above barriers. So this lack of social distancing without a mask is a recipe for disaster. Plus, these surfaces become a breeding ground of germs if not cleaned properly between class. Due to current, number three, due to current numbers five times higher than those recorded during the spring school closings, every child in every grade, including high school, should have the option to continue their education from home via Duval Home Room. Withdrawing from an assigned school to enroll in Duval Virtual or Florida Virtual will cause our, will cause our schools and our district to lose money, and students should not have to leave their schools and potentially lose either a spot in their advanced program or their magnet school due to this historic pandemic. Our group would love to virtual conference at your convenience. Again, that's Marla Bryant, Atlantic Coast High School PTSA parent and member of the Duval School Pandemic Solutions Team. The next comment comes from Rolene Sullivan, also a member of the Duval Schools Pandemic Solutions Team. Uh, Rolene writes, "As the COVID-19 cases continue to rise in Florida and specifically in Duval County, Duval residents have become more vigilant about practicing safety protocols. With more evidence showing positive cases in the younger population and unexplained illness, the health of our children have become an increasing priority. With that said, my concern is the absence of mandating mask at all times for Duval Schools. According to Dr. Green, six feet social distancing cannot be achieved, and thus plexiglass barriers will be installed onto desks to combat this issue. She says the barriers will serve as a sufficient deterrent of the virus, and therefore mask will not need to be worn once students are in the classrooms. I disagree. On June twentieth, 2020, the Florida Surgeon General Scott Revkey stated, "All individuals in Florida should wear face coverings in any setting where social distancing is not possible." Practicing social distancing by maintaining a distance of at least six feet from each other and wear a face covering. This implies that both methods of six feet distancing and mask should be practiced in order to properly safeguard oneself from COVID-19. The Florida Medical Association also believes in wearing mask at all times in public and has rationalized their medical opinion by stating asymptomatic infected individuals can release the infectious aerosol particles while breathing and speaking. Not wearing a mask or face covering increases exposure. Other organizations have taken this approach of mandating mask in public places, including the University of Florida, UNF, FFCJ, EWC, and JRFD. Lastly, in accordance to CDC guidelines, the current Duval plan would be moving from mid-risk to high-risk by not having six feet social distancing. Although CDC suggests barriers can help reduce the spread, they also stated face covering should be worn by staff and students, particularly older students, as feasible and are most essential in times when physical distancing is difficult. Florida DOH also states, "Cover your mouth and nose with a cloth face coverings when around others and out in public," period. No exceptions were given. I believe the idea here should be to practice the most efficient protocol to safeguard our children, especially when there is no vaccine or treatment protocol in place. Let's not wait for an outbreak to mandate mask. Let's provide the most effective way now to provide the best best plan to keep our children, school, staff, and their families safe. The next public comment comes from Kim Stefanic Alvarez, uh, who is a pre-IB Stanton parent. Members of the Duval Schools Pandemic Solution and a member of the Duval Schools Pandemic Solutions Team. My concern is if a high school student decides not to return to school in person in August, they will have to leave the IB program and school. Why should a high school student have to decide if their education is more important than their health? They should be able to continue their education online through Duval Home Room and not be penalized and return when it is more safe to do so. By doing Duval Home Room full-time, it will help decrease the in-person class size. Some high school students do not want to risk returning in person and chance bringing an illness home to their parents and family. This next letter comes also from a pre-IB Stanton student. This is Carlos Alvarez, also a member of the Duval Pandemic Solutions Team. Although I appreciate that high schoolers are not attending school in person full-time, I still think that there is a need for an alternative where students can stay in their school fully through Duval Home Room. With all of the great programs like IB and AP and even early college that DCPS has, lots of students would have to give up their hard work to protect themselves and their loved ones from the pandemic. Personally, I worked hard to get into Stanton and the IB program, and I still wish to pursue it. I don't think any student would be in the position to have to forfeit the education and diploma that they have earned just for their safety. With two days a week, even more time would be spent transitioning in halls and being in large groups. With lots of immunocompromised parents and family, this plan poses a large threat to people of all academic tracks. Ultimately, returning back to school in a month makes me feel like being in quarantine for four months was for nothing. The Duval Home Room experience kept everyone safe and still allowed for students and teachers to communicate. It was considered a temporary solution, but it still allowed for students to learn and have some form of a lesson from each teacher. A lot of people that I know are at a crossroads with their parents not wanting to risk exposure, while they also want to keep going on the path that they are on. Not to mention forfeiture of a spot at the school means that you most likely won't return there. One of the greatest parts of Duval is that there are options for every type of learner, and that privilege cannot be given to every student without a fully online alternative. In conclusion, an all-online option for high schoolers should be available and still allow us to stay in our current school of choice with their teachers and programs so we can continue our academic journeys with as little disturbance as possible. And that's again from Carlos Alvarez. Our next letter is from Leslie Jurs. Uh, Leslie writes, "We have overwhelming evidence that our leaders tirelessly tirelessly and thoughtfully serve our best interests. Please keep our confidence by navigating the COVID-19 crisis with respect for its potentially dire consequences using CDC science and our strategic plans' core values. DCPS science mission calls us to center on contemporary research-based best practices. Following CDC recommendations accomplishes this. CDC guiding principles establish that the more people a student or staff interacts with, the longer the interaction, the higher the risk of COVID-19 spread. High schools with poorly ventilated crowded rooms and mixed cohorts are deemed highest risk. Given our mission, risk, and countless unknowns, it is imperative we closely follow CDC guidelines. The CDC reminds us that effectiveness resides in symbiotic layers. Where one measure cannot be followed, greater diligence toward others compensates. Our policies, our policies should demonstrate that we respect science and each other. Number one, we must have an indoor mandatory mask policy. Science shows it works. Half-measures voluntary encourage alter the science and transform reciprocal managed risk into an inequitable roulette. Social distancing needs to be feasible. Staggering days for a less crowded school while stacking individual classrooms past capacity violates science and integrity. Where impossible, distancing must be supplemented. Barriers cannot replace distancing and mask. The CDC's position is face covering should be worn, particularly older students, as feasible and are most essential in times when physical distancing is difficult. Four, delayed schedules need to be considered. Start dates, pacing, and testing calendars must adapt to any worsening or even current conditions that prevent protecting the safety and well-being of every school, classroom, student, and teacher every day. Number five, full-time Duval Home Room needs to be an option. Our vision calls us to inspire and prepare all students for success. For some, no science is yet available to provide an adequately safe in-person environment. We cannot force these families to choose between their safety and their schools, magnet seats, progression plans, and jobs. We share these thoughts with the spirit of cooperation and great respect for the immense unprecedented challenges we face with COVID-19. We are stronger if we pursue the elusive balance among mutually exclusive needs with limited resources together. We trust you will continue to make us proud with science and our core values as your guide." And again, that's from Leslie Jurs. Her next, uh, public comment comes from Greg Kiefer. Greg writes, "Dear board members and superintendent, one aspect of the current plan for reopening schools for the 2021 school year that is of particular import to my family is an issue tied directly to school choice with regard to magnet track continuity. My understanding is that at this time, parents will be faced with an uncomfortable choice between returning to school in a very uncertain and potentially dangerous situation or the safe option of continued home virtual school but with loss of magnet track continuity. I want to make it clear that for myself, and I am sure many magnet parents, this is something we are very unhappy with as we have invested an enormous amount of time and commitment to our child's scholastic success to first get into and then to remain in these programs. We face uncertainty every time we go into the lottery for the next stage in our child's education. But never have we had to face choice in their educational path that might potentially result in the deaths of our children, ourselves, or their grandparents. That is not hyperbole. That is the reality of the pandemic. I hope that you will understand what I'm saying here, and will look more closely at this issue as part of your decision-making process going forward. We have made sacrifices for our children. Many of us stretching back to kindergarten. To have to decide between their scholastic future and the health of our family is an incredibly hard choice to have to face on top of all the absolute crazy times we are in the middle of here. Thank you for your time and continued commitment to our children." And again, that was from Greg Kiefer. Our next letter writer is Victoria Sullivan. Uh, Victoria says she's a current Stanton College Prep High School student in eleventh grade. She writes, "As a student of Stanton College Preparatories High School, I care deeply about my education. Stanton offers many rigorous courses and programs that are beneficial to my future. I am currently enrolled in the IB program that is available at Stanton and have worked hard the past two years attending this school. However, due to the coronavirus pandemic, changes to the education system had to be implemented to ensure the safety of students and faculty. According to the plans for the next school year, high school students will have two offers of either going to their school two days a week and learning online for the remaining days or dropping out of their school altogether and enrolling in DVIA. I understand that some students are eager in returning to their school campus. However, this may put some students at risk of contracting the virus while transporting to school and attending classes. In this way, is it possible to additionally offer a fully online learning option through Duval Home Room that will allow you to still be enrolled in your current high school? I really enjoy attending Stanton College Prep and do not want to drop out, especially since doing so means I may not have access to the same programs and classes that I do at Stanton. I also do not want to risk compromising my health and potentially the health of my parents and younger siblings as well by attending school for two days of the week. So providing an alternative that would eliminate the stressors of having to prioritize either my health or my education would be helpful and fair to students like me who prefer to learn from home." That was from Ms. Victoria Sullivan. And our finer, our final, uh, public comment comes from Rebecca Beller, a parent of a Paxton high school sophomore and senior, and also identifies as a member of the Duval Schools Pandemic Solutions Team. Ms. Beller writes, "In speaking with many parents from a wide variety of backgrounds and households, we compiled questions and current concerns regarding the proposed plan for return to school that would like, we would like addressed. Mash could be mandatory on middle and high school campuses. This should be added to the dress care to help protect students and staff. Middle and high schools should have full-time option. These parents and teachers have the same challenges as households with young students and providing daily meals, supervision, and educational support. Will magnet and special program students keep their spots if their families choose to enroll them in virtual school? There are many reasons other than the particular student's health for families to choose a virtual option, and this would unfairly punish the student to remove them from a magnet or program spot. How will health screenings, class configurations, hygiene, school cleanings, lunches, PE recess, and after-school activities in inevitable instances of students or staff contracting COVID-19 be handled? This information helps us make decisions for our families and helps us support our students and our schools. What support and resources will DCPS provide to students and parents for online learning? Many parents must work and have limited resources to arrange for supervision and educational support. Many students have been unsuccessful as online learners. Can Duval Home Room be expanded for middle and high school students? It is possible that schools may have to close again and expected that students and staff will periodically be sick and are unable to attend school. Having this program running effectively full-time would help smooth the periods when students or teachers cannot be at physical school for any reason and allow a student to choose online learning part or full-time without enrolling, without un-enrolling from their school. Can school commencement be delayed until after the RNC? This event is expected to bring forty thousand non-residents to our city, and many families cannot avoid public contact, which increases the risk of virus spread within our schools and communities. And again, that was from Rebecca Beller, and with that, this concludes the public comment portion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Approval of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty agenda. Did the Duval County School Board approve the June thirtieth, twenty twenty agenda as submitted on June the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty? Ask for your motion.
So moved.
Moved by board member Hershey, second by board member Willie. Any discussion? If not, I call for your vote. Board member Grimes? Got to unmute.
Here, guys. Sorry.
Board member Hershey?
Yes.
Board member, and Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Joyce?
Yes.
Board member Willie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. By your action, you've approved the agenda six to zero. Thank you. Topics to be discussed: protective classroom transparent screens. Discussion, Dr. Green?
Thank you, Chairman. That the Duval County School Board approve a source of supply contract for COVID-19 school classroom transparent screens, RFQ zero zero three dash two zero dash LM with Drummond Press, Inc. and Low King Manufacturing Company from June thirtieth, twenty twenty through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. That the authority be delegated to the superintendent and her designee to renew the contract for subsequent annual periods provided the terms and conditions of the contract are essentially the same as originally awarded and funds are available for the additional period. There are two potential one-year renewal periods.
Okay. Any discussions?
Question.
Who, uh? Discussion? Okay. No discussion. Is there a motion?
I have a, can we discuss it out of the room? I don't know if you saw me.
Okay, I didn't see. Let's go ahead and move it and second, then we can go to discussion.
All right, so move.
Move back. Board member Hershey, second. The second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Anderson. Discussion of board member Hershey.
I just have a couple of questions for the superintendent through the chair. One is how many companies, uh, submitted bids or proposals for this? Um, I recognize Drummond Press. I know that that's a local company. Um, the other company you mentioned, just wanted to know if that was local. Um, if not, where are they located? And could you share with the board some of, uh, the reasons just besides maybe the bottom line that you chose these two vendors, please?
Through the chair to board member Hershey, uh, through the process, two companies applied, and it's the two companies that are listed uh, that I, uh, stated in the recommendation, and both companies are local.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Board member Willie?
Yeah, um, um, speaking of, speaking of, I mean, we, I know I've gotten emails. We got some public comment around the sort of the legitimacy of, of, of screens as you're, um, for public record for information that you're getting. Can you sort of go through your thought process on, on why these, um, would be a solution for us as we're moving forward?
Through the chair to- Through the chair to Board Member Willie. In the workshop and the opportunities that I've spoken about the safer reopening. First of all, students are required to wear facial coverings. They are required to wear them on buses. They are required to wear them during transition. We, we do require that desks are moved as far apart as possible. If they can get to the six feet, that is the requirement. However, some of our classrooms cannot get to six feet apart. Even though we highly encourage students to continue their facial covering, the screen is just an opportunity that a student could remove it and yet they still have somewhat of another barrier in front of them. If we will be requiring that individuals continue to do frequent hand washing, hand sanitizer. So the screens are not the be-all, end-all. It is, we are continuing to add a puzzle piece to try to create a safer environment, not only for our students, but our employees as well.
Yeah, and through the chair, I just wanted to make, because I think that that was, I understood that. I think there are a lot of questions about it, but this is an additional level and layer of protection that we're, we're trying to provide to students, which I think is an important, important step and being proactive, because as this situation moves, all of these things change. So I appreciate that proactive sort of nature and how we're moving about it. And just wanted to make sure the public sort of knew they approached and what you're thinking. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Willie. Any other? Vice Chair Anderson?
Thank you. First, I was looking back through my email and I'm trying to find whether or not we got a final agenda item for this. Another one in our book wasn't complete. Did we receive that?
Were you, you asking that?
Board members get it. Maybe it's in civic clerk and I just haven't seen the final version. I was looking at the line item.
I'm sorry. I mean, Vice Chair Anderson, are you referring to the agenda item we're doing for this particular meeting? I'm not sure it was in the draft. Was it included in the draft or did we have this meeting?
I believe it was item number thirty-three in our board binder, but it wasn't a complete item.
Through the chair, it is loaded in board sync and is published on the website. You can find the agenda item, including the attachment with the bid from the two company, the bids from the two companies. It's available online.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'll take, I'll log in and look at that in just a moment. I just want to make sure that I have a clear understanding. The question that I have around the dividers is relative to how we anticipate they, they will function. So I haven't heard and I know that we're leaving a lot of decisions up to each individual school. But for our secondary students, for our middle and high school students, as they are moving around throughout the day, how will these barriers, what is our anticipation for how they'll be maintained or cleaned?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. The, depending on which barrier is selected, it is a simple cloth wipe down for the foam and film and simple soap and water for the plexiglass. It really depends on which is chosen for each school and it's based on the setup of the classrooms. And that's why each school is filling out the survey so that we can determine which would be best for our schools. Right now, it's leaning more towards the foam and film, which is the easier to take care of and keep, keep clean, if you will, and less issues with it. We, we found that the plexiglass, if it hits the ground, it can easily crack and create sharp edges. And so we would be more inclined to look at the foam and film as the major item to be implemented. But at the elementary level, a student should be assigned to that seat. So that, that's the only student who would be sitting at that seat. At the secondary level, we will probably be recommending assigned seats so that the same student, group of students would go to the same seat.
But those students are going to be moving in and out of classes between periods.
Yes.
And so I think that what I've heard is concerns, a couple of concerns. One is who's going to be responsible for cleaning or wiping that down? Obviously, there's, you know, classrooms, hundreds of classrooms in a school building and a custodial staff couldn't be in all places in five minutes between classes. Our staff have some concerns about how or if they would be the ones required to wipe those down. And then I'm also hearing from parents concerns about, well, if the student is the one who needs to wipe it down before they leave class, are they going to be using chemicals and what, what about the exposure to what kinds of chemicals? So I mean, I'm kind of hearing it. First of all, I've never experienced so much division on any issue like I have in this particular, with this situation. I mean, I feel like it's fifty-fifty for and against. And so it's very difficult to try to speak for the community when it's so divided. But there are certain things that I certainly want to make sure that we have some real sound processes in place that, you know, I can speak to my constituency or that we can, you know, assure both staff and students and parents that there's a plan in place for this. On the one hand, I think it's a great opportunity to be able to continue to mitigate risk. Absolutely nothing that we put in place here is any guarantee that will keep anyone not sick. That's just not possible. We can't do that. But certainly we want to try the best we can to put all the steps in place that we can. And I don't want to inadvertently cause more problems. That, I mean, that would be my only concern is that there is, we are able to communicate and articulate exactly how these will be effective, exactly how we're going to maintain them and how they're going to help contribute to mitigating risk. Because I think a lot of people have concern that this is an expense that is not really going to be helpful. And we have to be able to show that that, that there's evidence for that and that we are going to maintain them in such a way that it will create a help, not a hindrance. So at some point, a more detailed plan for how these will be maintained, I think is going to be critical.
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. We are working through that process. Again, today's agenda item is just giving the administration to enter into the possibility of deciding which one of these products we, we will purchase. Everything that we're doing is just trying to create one other barrier of safety for students and staff. The facial coverings, we went through the same conversation when we dealt with that. It will be divided. I, 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 unless there's a cure, every plan we're going to put forward, we're going to have pros and cons against that plan. Our goal is to be able to reopen school, have as many students back in school as we can do in the safest manner that we can. We have other issues that we have to work through as well as not just a screening, but schools are working through how they will move about the school. How will they serve lunch? How, how will we interact? Whether it is a parent being able to come to the school or needing to come pick up a child. This entire summer will be spent in trying to address every single concern and try to put in an effective process to deal with those issues. It, and I think it's very important that the public remember that it can get to a point where we're, we're closing down and moving to Duval Home Room. That is why Duval Home Room will remain active. At the elementary level, we are implementing it for K through six. At the high school level, the issue is that it's about certification, about electives. When everyone was on Duval Home Room, we could do that. If only some people are on Duval Home Room, we cannot. Because we don't have an extra set of teachers that have those unique certifications. And that is why DVIA is offered for grade seven through twelve. So there isn't one simple intervention that we're, that we're doing that's going to completely get us to this high level of confidence, but it's going to take little measures, as I said, as little puzzle pieces, putting it together to make our schools and our, our district safer for individuals. As, as I shared at the workshop, we also have a plan. Even though we're trying to do everything to make everyone safer, they, we still will, will probably have confirmed cases of COVID-19 and we have to be able to transition to Duval Home Room, whether it's for a classroom, it's for a set of classrooms, it's for a school. We have to be able to make that pivot and that's why the hybrid model will allow, especially for secondary, to make the pivot very easily. Elementary, we, we will be working with elementary teachers to ensure that even though they may not be teaching Duval Home Room, that their Duval Home Room page and site is up to date and they can easily pivot if, if we have to move in that direction. I'm sorry, I probably gave you more information.
I, I mean, I appreciate the context. I think that there's, there's so many questions. There's so many concerns out there and I think that the more that we can help people understand what the thought process is behind it, you know, I hope the more comforting it is for folks that we're not just making these sweeping decisions without any thought. And I, and I know that you are being thoughtful. I know that the staff is being thoughtful. So I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to, to share more with the community and, you know, in a public forum such as this. Before I turn, before I turn it over, I'm looking at the item. I believe so, the transparent screens item here. And I just want to be clear what we're talking about ordering. So it's not, we don't know exactly what we'll order yet. Is that the case?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part of your question.
My apology. Do we know exactly what we'll order or how many of each of the items we are anticipating purchasing?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. We have not made a final decision of how many we will order. We met about it yesterday to ensure that our comfort level starts with elementary. Elementary is the grade band that even if we are mandating wearing facial coverings, that's the grade band where it's going to be a little challenge to ensure that they're wearing their facial coverings and also understanding that a lot of the information we're getting from the CDC changes quite frequently, but elementary is the, the one area that our confidence level is very high and we, we feel like that is where we should begin. Then we will look at middle school and high school.
Do you know, is there any time estimate on how long it's going to take before we need to make this decision, put in the order, get them installed? What does the timeline look like for that?
Through the chair to Vice Chair Anderson. The timeline will, it will take all the remaining month of July and the first week of August. If, if we are moving this district-wide in all grade bands. They understand that we, we have to move on this process. We, we will look, they, they indicate they need seven days lead time to start production. So we have to put in a certain amount of an order. So I believe our goal is to start with something a little over fifty thousand. So they have their seven days and then they indicate they can put out several thousand a day.
Do you know, I mean, we're starting at fifty thousand. Do you know or anticipate a total number that we might be looking at?
If we were looking at the entire district for all levels, and when I say levels, that's really starting at third grade. I, I want to say about a hundred and twenty thousand. That give or take.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Anderson. Any other questions? Board Member Joyce?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So through the chair to the superintendent. I know a few weeks ago when we individually came out and toured what a COVID school would look like. It was told that the high school, middle and high school classrooms would have the plexiglass and the elementary schools would have the foam partitions. And so what I'm hearing, I think, is that there has been some waiver that maybe that's not the case anymore. So can you just elaborate on that for a moment?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, when, when we tested the plexiglass, we found that it could shatter easily if it is, like if it fell, not that we think that the plexiglass could easily fall, but if a desk turned over and it hit the ground, the plexiglass, it cracked very easily. So that is a concern for us.
So the, what, what I thought I heard you say is that maybe principals would be making the decision for their individual schools, whether it would be plexiglass or it would be foam, or have we moved completely to foam only now?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, we have, it, it is not the school that would make that decision. Elementary is foam and film. Oh, that has been from the very beginning. Now, in talking with principals, we are talking through whether we should just do foam and film. It, it won't be an individual school decision. It will be a decision and it, it will be standardized.
And so the, the, the issue with the foam and film was that it was not very durable. And so my concern is that, you know, we can order a certain amount to, to have in all the classrooms, but if it's not durable, then, you know, we, we would have to continue throughout the year ordering more and more. And, and I would like to just get what is a, a cost, final cost at the beginning of what? I mean, usually when we get a financial analysis, we have a range of what, what the item is going to cost in a certain amount. And I don't see that in this agenda item. And so I would like a little more information about what the final cost analysis might be.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, it is listed under the financial impact that the approximately four million from Fund Ten Seven Four Zero, which is the special fund dealing with COVID-19 costs.
Yeah, I'm looking just a second. Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Uh, Board Member Hershey, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand.
So I just would like to clarify a couple of things. Board Member Joyce uh mentioned when we went out to Ocean Way. Um, it was my understanding when I toured Ocean Way that part of the reason for getting um partitions in schools was to allow students um a time that they would not be wearing a face mask. Um, that face masks were retra- were required when students are changing classes. Face masks were uh um are required in the hallways and things like that. But this would give them an opportunity to be in the classroom without having a face mask on a hundred percent of the school day. And I think that's particularly important for people who have students with asthma or breathing conditions to be able to, to not have to have the mask on. Is that the case or are you saying now that students are required to wear masks? And we will have the plexiglass um at school?
Through the chair to uh Board Member Hershey. Yesterday, the mayor put out uh an executive order that facial coverings have to be worn inside buildings. We've not gotten a direct information about how does that relate to the school district and schools? And if that order is in place when school begins, then we may also have to um implement that they have to have their facial covering on at all times when they're indoors. However, we do have to remember that we are working with children. And that, yes, though it may be required, they may not have it on or they, they and we, we have children who do have asthma and, and other uh underlying medical conditions. So again, it's back to, that's why we've also invested in face shields. So that students can wear a face shield if a facial covering i- is not going to work for them. Again, this agenda item is allowing us to have that conversation forward in deciding where should we place the shields? So that it is another layer of support for our schools. So if the order stays in place and, and, and all intents and purposes, I believe it will apply to us. That then students will be required to wear their facial coverings at all times when they're inside the building. Which means if they're transitioning, if they're on the bus, they'll, they'll have to have a facial covering. The, if they're wearing a facial covering, the, the screen is, is not as needed. But again, it's still another layer of protection. It's very similar to wearing a face shield and a facial covering.
Okay, and so our only uh means of facial coverings will be the face mask or the face shield. We're not going to allow the neck gators to be worn.
The what?
The, they know that goes around your neck and you can just pull it up.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. It, as long as it meets the code of student conduct, yes, they can wear the neck ones that just pull up. Those are also, I just said facial coverings, I'm sorry.
No, that's what I was, I was just clarifying and, and I asked specifically about the mask because I have asthma. And it's one thing for me to wear that into this grocery store. I can't imagine wearing it all day. The neck gator gives you a little bit more breathing room. So I appreciate that clarity. I think at this point, it's important for us to remind the public that this is still a fluid conversation. And we don't really know what August is going to look like. And just like, um, it seems like it's about a month ago when we made the decision, or maybe two months ago, about purchasing face mask and we got a lot of pushback, we were being proactive. And in retrospect, that step was very smart because guess what? We have face masks while other school districts near us, because I've talked to other board members, have not even ordered theirs. So, and they're trying to figure it out. This conversation again, as we are trying to be proactive and put systems in place that will allow us to um have health safety in our schools to the best of our ability. Um, and just one more clarifying thing because people, you know, talk about money. Just like face mask and other expenses that we will incur with COVID nineteen. Uh, through the chair of Dr. Green, isn't this again, another example of a purchase that is reimbursable through the CARES Act?
Through the chair to uh Board Member Ms. Hershey, yes, this purchase will be covered under the CARES Act dollars we will receive.
So these are dollars that are released to us from the federal government. And I don't know if it goes to the state and then to us, uh, which is, I know that's how hurricane money works. But this is not money that we are carelessly taking out of our budget to take away from um moving student achievement or, or providing teachers with resources. This is a, a purchase for uh school health safety that will ultimately be paid for out of the CARES Act, which is money set aside by the federal government, correct?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, that is correct. Our budget was, is being submitted today.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, do I see any other hands? Uh, Dr. Green, thank you for presenting this to us. I know timing is important. Could you, can you just briefly go over the reason why we're having a special meeting? Because we need to have all those items purchased and installed by a certain date.
Through the chair to the board, yes, these items have to be manufactured. It's so we're in, it's, we're not doing a buy off the shelf like it exists. It has to be manufactured and then once it, it, the manufacturing is over, it has to be delivered and then installed. As I stated, our first priority is elementary for our elementary schools. We have over a hundred elementary schools, so they are the first priority.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no hands, uh, Woman Willie, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate the new language that I got around neck gator. So if, if I'm a Bulldog fan, though, can it be a neck dog? Like, I'm just trying to make sure.
No, we're gonna stay with the neck gator. All right. Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions? I call for your vote. Board Member Grimes. Yes.
Here I am. I don't trust you with the, with the, with the, uh, anyway, go, yes.
Okay, yes. Board Member Hershey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Board Member Joyce.
Yes.
Board Member Willie.
Yes.
Board Member Jones, yes. By your action, you approve that item six to zero. Thank you very much. Uh, anything for governance? Seeing no hands, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Chairman Jones, for governance, I, I don't want to belabor this. But I just want to, would like to have a conversation um that COVID nineteen is still a very fluid issue and it's ongoing and everything. And um, can we just, uh, through the superintendent, assure that this is going to be an ongoing conversation? And um that what we decide today might, might change tomorrow. I just think people are looking for certainty in a time of uncertainty and it's hard to be certain. And anyway, that's the only thing for, for govern- just to reiterate, this is ongoing and ever changing. And I would just like, uh, through the chair to ask the superintendent to uh help us assure the public that um this is an ongoing conversation and we're doing our best uh to be proactive and make decisions um that are in the health and welfare and best interest of both teachers and students.
Uh, thank you, Woman Hershey. You, you're so right. And there is, uh, we haven't had any courses FSBA on how to respond to a pandemic. And I'm sure that there are no curriculum that Dr. Green had when she was in school and any of us in school on how to respond to a pandemic, but I appreciate that. And Dr. Green, you want to respond? You're on mute.
Yes, unmute myself. Through the chair to the board and Ms. Hershey, yes, we are living this twenty-four seven. Uh, I seem to wake up thinking about COVID nineteen, work all day, thinking about COVID nineteen, constantly talking to individuals about COVID nineteen. So the conversation will have to be ongoing. I, believe it or not, even though we have people who disagree, I think they appreciate that we at least have a plan. They appreciate that we're telling them well in advance what it, what the plan is, is. But I think they will appreciate also knowing that we have to be very fluid because the plan can change on a dime. Just like I said yesterday, it just came out that facial coverings are required in all indoor public places. So each day, we have the opportunity to get new information that tells us, okay, we thought this, now it's something else and we have to pivot and be prepared for that new change. I, I know that um through Dr. Pierce, we, we are setting up our website. And it is slated to go live next week. So again, parents will have access to more information. Uh, they'll have access to how to register if they choose Duval Home Room for grades K through six or for secondary. Uh, you know that we're bringing a, an agenda item to ask for a waiver from the policy that states if you enroll in DVIA, you're, you give up your seat to uh move into this new school. So as, as parents talk to us, as teachers talk to us, we, we acknowledge the frustration, we acknowledge the, I don't, I don't even know if it's frustrating. I think the uncertainty and the being nervous about what's going to happen. If we look at the data that came, that comes out each day, at least I see it every day. Uh, in, in the last two weeks, we have grown from one thousand nine hundred cases to now we're about to hit six, over six thousand. That, that, that is very scary. And it, I don't see the, the slowdown coming. And we're just trying to be prepared for when August hits. We can, we can, if we have to move to a hundred percent Duval Home Room, we can and we will. Or if we can move to students coming, I think we should enter slowly. Staff has, we've worked with staff that, oh, after a month and we find, oh, we have zero cake. We can pivot and say all students are, are coming back. Or we can uh say we can add another grade level to come another, another day. The goal is that as things improve or not improve, we can easily adjust to the situation. And we will continue having that conversation.
I, I appreciate that. Through the chair to Dr. Green, I, I have just one more question. Uh, one thing that St. John's County Board did early on was roll out kind of a three-phase plan. If everybody's healed and there's no COVID nineteen, you go back to school as normal. And then if, you know, and then it kind of said, if there's an issue, then it's, you know, a hybrid plan similar to us. And then um online, um, would it be wise for us to have a discussion maybe in July about what conditions, just so people would know, would uh point to us opening in August? But opening through Duval Home Room so that just people know if the, if, you know, if, if there's X amount of increase, um, should we have that conversation versus, you know, people wondering if that, that might happen? The conditions, I guess my question is, is should we identify conditions that would point to doing virtual and, and in August, um, sometime in July, if we should have that conversation?
Through the chair, we, to Ms. Hershey, we actually have started that conversation with the Department of Health and, and asked them you, to help tell us what conditions should be present. And I kind of went the other direction. What conditions can you tell me that I can move to phase two? That says, oh, high school students now are coming to school three days a week or sort of like this matrix that we could say phase one, phase two, phase three. This is how we get to all students back in school. But the conversation about um August, yeah, we would need to have that conversation. I, I do still believe that we won't know the, the total impact because they haven't been back in our schools since spring break. We won't know until we actually get them into the school, what is the uh total impact for us. But we are seeing more um, the numbers for young adults. Uh, it used to be the average age on the website for Duval was forty-nine. It's now dropped to thirty-five. So that's indicating uh more younger individuals are contracting COVID nineteen. Unfortunately for us, they don't break that data down to school age. The, the, the band is from fifteen to twenty-four, though that band has grown uh four times since the beginning. We don't know who's in the band. We don't know how many of the, those young people are high school students. Though we know high school students are in it. I'm sorry, now when I talk about this, I just, just keep talking, so. Just answer the questions.
Thank you. You did well. Uh, Ms. Hershey, did that answer your question?
I, I, I appreciate that. I, I really asked because I think i- if the public's listening, they need to hear this. I think we need to underscore that you are in fact in touch with the CDC. And, and these decisions and conversations are not just um at the local level, but at a broader level. And you have an influx of information coming into you. Um, and, and I just think we have to remind people that this is again, a fluid situation. And I think we all thought it was going to be over by now and it's not. And I think people are getting weary. And I think that's another part of the frustration. But thank you, Dr. Green, for your leadership.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Joyce.
Yes, thank you, Chair Jones. Um, I, I do appreciate um having the opportunity to have this conversation. And I would like to just um ask the superintendent, um, we do. What I'm seeing in my constituency is there's a real divide. Um, parents who want their children to go back full-time, parents who don't want their children to go back at all. They want to continue uh the Duval Home Room and not move over to the virtual uh school. And so, you know, I was wondering, is there any sense or is there a way that the district could possibly get a sense of, you know, is that a real fifty-fifty divide? And if it is, would there be an opportunity for the district to provide a full-time option to the parents who want that or provide the Duval Home Room option to the parents who want that? Because, you know, going in a couple of days a week exposes these kids. And, um, and if you're willing to take the risk, then, then you do. And some parents are and some parents are, don't, are, aren't willing to take the risk. So I just want to have a conversation, um, ask you, is that a possibility? That we could, you know, walk down that road and explore those, that scenario?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I would never say we can't have the conversation. It would just be I don't want to say virtually impossible. The reason Duval Home Room could be done at the secondary level is because everybody was doing it. So students who were enrolled in construction for an elective, yeah, the construction teacher was working from home. That won't be the case when we're offering face-to-face. Those teachers will be teaching face-to-face, I'm using high school as an example, two days a week. Well, the other days that they're not face-to-face, they're doing Duval Home Room. The, the teachers are all engaged in either face-to-face or they're engaged in Duval Home Room. For elementary, you only need one certification to teach everything. When you're certified elementary ed, you're actually certified to teach music, you're certified to teach art, you could teach PE if, if you had to. And we can, we can utilize current teachers who we can keep at the school, but yet they are full-time teaching Duval Home Room. For secondary, it is by certification. So even if we only had 25 students sign up, and I'm just making this number up, for Duval Home Room for middle school, I still would have to find a certified ELA teacher, a certified math teacher, a certified social studies teacher, a certified, whatever, what's the elective? So are we good? If, if, if some of those students take ban, well, they couldn't take, we have to have those electives for certification. That is the issue that we face with Duval Home Room at the secondary level. And DVIA was built to do that, Duval Virtual Instructional Academy. It, it is a franchise of Florida Virtual School. So that is why we're bringing the item to the board at the next board, so that students who attend magnet school won't lose their seat. If you choose that you want to do online and you're not comfortable about going to school, we don't want you to have to make that decision. We don't want to make the decision even more challenging than it already is. So we're requesting, we'll be requesting a waiver from that policy, so that parents can say, I'm, I'm gonna do this, yet I know my seat is safe at LaVilla, or my seat is safe at Stanton. We met with the high school principals, the dedicated magnet high school principals yesterday, and talked about, you know, even if you have students who do DVIA, we, we talked about a possibility of dual enrollment, because there are some very specific IB courses that aren't offered through DVIA, and it's one in particular. And we figured out, okay, if you have a student, how do we ensure they can still take this course through, through? Even though, so we talked about, you're dual enrolled, you're partly enrolled in DVIA, and you're partly enrolled in Stanton. And so Stanton will make sure that one course that DVIA doesn't have, you're accessing that course through live streaming. So, so even though we have a, a plan, there are so many small intricacies to our plan that we have to, we keep working out these anomalies, trying to touch every situation that this, this would cause a, a high level of pain. We're trying to find a solution. How do we have a solution for that? As I say, I'm trying to just simply answer these questions, but they, they're, they're, they're a lot more complex than just saying, no, we can't do it. And I'm trying to explain, even though we're saying, no, we, they're, these are the reasons that impact Duval Home Room.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that the district has done to try to figure this out. And I just would like to continue to explore options that I, that I think that that is something that, that we need to do, because we are walking and treading in new, you know, in places that we've never been. And so I just want the public to know that we're listening and we are having these conversations. And that, again, it's a fluid situation and it's changing. And so, you know, we're gonna do what's best for the kids and our teachers in our district. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Okay, thank you, right, Board Member Joyce. Board Member Willie?
Yeah, I just wanted, the sentiments of my board members are exactly right. I think this is a fluid situation. And I, I appreciate that we have something for the community to react to, and they've done a good job of doing just that. My question is around, as we move forward, I know the website's coming out, is that also an opportunity for us to continue collecting feedback and questions and comments from the community as well on that same platform?
Through the chair, to Board Member Willie, I believe so. I, the, the site is still under construction, so I don't want to state something that I'm not 100% sure. I think it has the section, Ask a Question. Yes, I, I think it will have that capability. It, it, it will be very robust. It'll have video, it will have a lot of information on it.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we have enough, plenty of questions and comments in our email inboxes, but I think a public forum for folks to, to share those too is always a good thing. So thank you for all of y'all's hard work.
Through the chair, if it's okay. I see Dr. Pierce, he, he's unmuted. I can let him address the website.
All right, Dr. Pierce?
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Willie, for that question. Yeah, the website will include everything that Dr. Green just said, and we will have a mechanism for members of the community stakeholders to send feedback back to us. We've been using an open-ended survey. Not sure we're gonna continue using that mechanism. We'll probably use our Talk with Team Duval app that we launched last year, just mainly because we want people to be used to that as a way to engage with the district about their questions, concerns, feedback, all those kinds of things. But there will be that two-way communication on the site.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Anderson?
Thank you so much. I'll start, I'll start there with the website. I have a few questions, but I just want to double-check, will we have, in addition to people being able to give feedback, like an FAQ on the website or someplace it's posted so that people can get all this information?
Through the chair, to Board Member Anderson, yes.
Okay, short, short answer, but yes. And when did you say we expect that?
I'm trying to shorten up my answers.
A few questions, and then I'll let Duke start. When did you say the website might be up?
Next week.
Perfect. Would you mind, I think one of the things that has been particularly impactful in conversations that I'm having with community members and leaders is the transportation school bus issue related to secondary and some of the reasons why we're having to make decisions about how frequently they should be in school. Would you mind just kind of going over that for the benefit of the public?
Yes, through the chair, to Board Vice Chair Anderson, transportation, we transport a little over 48,000 students, elementary, middle, high school, as well as magnet transportation. Magnet transportation is about 11,000 of that 48,000. And high school is the largest, 21,000 students. On a normal 77-passenger bus, we had in, on average, of 50 to 54 students riding a bus. That's anywhere from two to three students per seat. The CDC guidelines actually indicate that we should only put one student per seat every other seat. On a 77-passenger bus, that would mean we could only transport 11 students. We have probably one of the most complex transportation systems in the, not only in the state of Florida, but in the nation, because we value choice in magnet transportation. So for us to even come close to CDC guidelines, which we're not, we are best can, best-case scenario, hoping to only have one student per seat, up to two students per seat. That still does not reach the average ridership that we would normally do in transporting students for high school. That ridership would be anywhere from 22 to maximum 44 students per route. Therefore, in some cases, we have to double up the routes. That means we have to take a group of students to school and then come back and run the route again so that we can pick up the additional students. So we are already expanding our routes to ensure that, one, we can meet the need for all students, whether they attend a dedicated magnet or they're just attending their neighborhood school. Two, there is the requirement that students must wear facial covering. We've stated that we're not, our, our goal is not to be the facial covering police, so the bus will have disposables. So if a student shows up, they don't have a, a facial covering, they will be given one. By expanding these routes, it will change bell times. That's why the website will be so important, because they will need to see those changes in routes, how it impacts the bell time. So, one, by doing the 44, that's transporting only half for high school, 50% of the students being on a campus at one time. So transportation is one aspect of why we're stating two days a week for high school and for middle school, the four-day, three-day. The other aspect is cafeteria. Cafeteria, you cannot eat and wear facial covering at the same time. Therefore, we have to figure out, how do we implement six feet of social distancing? So a cafeteria that could average about 500 students during one lunch period, today, if, if we use Ocean Way Middle School as the example, they're only going to be able to serve 116 students per lunch period. Even with 2/3 of the students at school, she is already looking at the possibility of anywhere from five to six lunches to ensure that, one, we are still providing the 30 minutes for our, all of our students for lunch, and, two, the, the six feet of social distancing. So those are the two main areas that are impacting the hybrid. How many students can we actually transport on a bus? And how many routes that are gonna have to be doubled up? And the high school, the, the other thing I need to add is because we know high school students are very active, they have after-school activities, on the days that they are doing Duval Home Room, we, we will also be running activity buses so that those students can catch the activity bus and get to school to, to participate in their after-school activities, whether that's tutoring, band practice, football practice, whatever's happening in the fall for after-school, we, we also are implementing activity buses. That is why we're constantly saying that the conversation always has to be constant, because most people don't understand all the things that go into just running a school district or running a school. It, it requires a lot of coordination with other entities such as transportation, food service, working with our DTU, ensure that we are providing that support also for our employees.
I, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate you sharing that, because I think that, you know, as, as I'm reading some of the emails and I'm seeing some of the feedback we're getting, you know, people just aren't sure, like, why we're, why certain decisions are being made. And I think that the transportation one is a really important one. I think it's important for folks to understand that because we value choice, because we have such a robust magnet system, we provide so much transportation, busing to our secondary students, we already run three times what the state gives us for transportation. And so when we're talking about having to double up routes and expand the mileage that we, that we pay, this could run into some real serious expense pretty quickly. And I think as board members and, and listening to you and supporting the decisions you're making as a superintendent for our daily operations during this crazy time, you know, that's one of the things that's on my mind, is how, how is this going to impact our costs and I'm being good steward of taxpayer dollars? And so, you know, part of the reason for stepping back and, and limiting or using the hybrid model so that students are in-school some and, and online some is because of the exorbitant costs and the, the, not just that, but just the functionality, right? It doesn't actually, we can't actually get them to school. We can't run that many bus routes. We can't have that many lunches to be able to have all the students in the building. And it's in no way saying the students shouldn't get a one-on-one social experience in live person with a teacher. That's, you know, we are discounting that. I know the student or the staff and leaders certainly aren't discounting how important and critical that is. But there's just a, a functionality that's important to consider. So I appreciate you sharing that with us. The next question I had was related to summer school. Are there any updates about how we, when we'll start summer school? How we'll run summer school? I know before we talked about the potential of it being sort of a soft opening. Are there any summer school updates?
Through the chair, to Board Vice Chair Anderson, we are currently in the middle of summer school. It's being done virtually at this time. We did a survey with our families that are engaged in virtual summer school and our instructional personnel who are, who are teaching virtual summer school. And at this time, we only have one school that will have one face-to-face class. It is King's Trail for ESOL students. We asked the parents, did you want to participate? And base that reopening of those sites based on the survey. And this was the only school that had enough participants that wanted to leave virtual and move to face-to-face. So we will have that one class starting the week of July 6. Our summer camps will start next week. Ms. Young and the team went to visit Mandarin Oaks yesterday to see how do they have their summer camp set up. And they have all their little desks six feet apart. They have their camp manual that shares with the parents how frequently handwashing, every hour, they, they will have a handwashing activity. So we feel very confident that the sites that will be...